Meeting will please come into order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us tonight. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Wilmette. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to have a copy so you can follow on to see when your matter will be called. Now, if you plan to address us tonight, we ask you to please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask you to please speak clearly in the microphone so we can hear you, and because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. From those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available both at Village Hall and on our website at wilmette.com. Also, our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet. If you look up in the corners of the room, you can actually see the cameras. The red light indicates the active camera. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, to see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board, other local government meetings, on our website at wilmette.com. And I would like to personally thank all the residents of Wilmette who tune in regularly to Channel 6 to follow the workings of their village government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these materials are also posted on wilmette.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members received. This week's packet contained 176 pages. We've had an opportunity to review the information in the agenda packets, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you tell us the most relevant, most material, the most important points you really want us to focus on in our discussion. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we want our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible, so as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your phones and other devices. And while we're turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Kennedy?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here. We're all here, so we obviously have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on a matter which is not on the agenda tonight. Members of the audience who wish to address us on a matter which is on the agenda can do so when that matter is called. So is there any member of the audience who would like to address the Board on an item which is not on the agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on. Next item is the Consent Agenda, Item 3. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. All items beginning with the number 3 are on the Consent Agenda, so tonight, the Consent Agenda consists of, starting on Page 1 with Item 3.1, almost all the items on Page 2 ending with Item 3.1.2. So items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and not removed by one of the trustees, the item will be approved and it will not be discussed. So I'll begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on. Are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, may I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been, I think that was a second. It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Barrett?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So the motion carries the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it was just approved. And for those of you here tonight, the really only one to note is Land use Item 3.3. So if that's your item, it was just approved. There will be no further discussion of that item or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda, so you are free to leave, but of course, more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting. I don't see anybody getting up, so I won't do my usual comment about stopping by one of our restaurants. But if anybody does get up while I'm not looking, it is early, so please stop by one of our restaurants in downtown Wilmette before you head home. We'll move on to the Report of Officers. First item is Item 4.1, Introduction of Joel Feinstein, who's recommended for appointment to the Environmental and Energy Commission, and he's here tonight, so would you please approach? Welcome. If you'd just take a minute to introduce yourself to the Board, I think many people know you, but introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself.
Thank you. My name is Joel Feinstein. I live at 407 Wilshire Drive West in the west side of the village, and I am a civil engineer. I work for a company that does transportation consulting, and I do stormwater and drainage for them. And I'm pleased to be able to serve on the commission with, under Kathy, for the Environmental and Energy Commission.
Any questions for Mr. Feinstein?
No, and your engineering background's a great fit. The Environmental Energy Commission, as we talked, has a number of different individuals with a really diverse and wonderful background, so I appreciate your willingness to serve. And at the next Board meeting, this is, tonight was your recommendation, at the next boarding Board meeting, you should be approved and a full-fledged member of the Commission.
Okay.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Item 4.2, which is Introduction of Ryrie Pelletin, who's recommended for appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Welcome, sir.
How are you?
I'm going to give you the same instructions. Please introduce yourself. I think people know who you are, but...
I'm Ryrie Pelletin. I live at 1115 Lake Avenue, so just a block from here. And I have had a varied experience since graduating from school with a degree with French literature and political science in construction, residential construction, as well as education. My last position was as the Director of Operations at the Francis Parker School in downtown Chicago. And I am looking forward to serving on the Zoning Board of Appeals. And I'm willing to answer any questions. I don't know if you have any.
Any questions for Mr. Pelletin?
No. No, I think, you know, and you also just finished up service as a Park District Commissioner, so continuing your service to the village, which is appreciated. And again, I thought your background, your construction background made you a particularly good fit for the zoning board. It's always great when we have architects and people who understand construction when we sort of get into the details. So thank you very much for your willingness to continue to serve. And as I said to Mr. Feinstein, tonight is your recommendation at the next Village Board meeting. Your appointment will be on the Consent Agenda, and you will be a full-fledged member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I want to plug for the beach house. If you haven't seen the new beach house yet, down in Gelson.
Well, isn't there a, isn't the We Met Foundation having sort of an opening fundraiser there on June 8th?
They are indeed, June 8th. Yep, absolutely. We had the ribbon cutting last Friday, but it's open for the public to use, so...
So if you would do something about that, I'll put the weather on the Park District's list of things. We could do something about the weather. I think people would be happy to come down to the beach.
Exactly. All right. Take care.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletin. All right, the next item on the agenda is Item 4.3, which is Proclamation Designated June 10, 2019, a day to celebrate women's right to vote. And I will read the proclamation. Whereas Illinois had long been at the forefront of the movement to provide women the right to vote, and whereas in Illinois, the first Women's Suffrage Association was established in Earlville in LaSalle County in 1855, just seven years after the first Women's Rights Convention in Seneca Falls, New York, which called for suffrage for women. And whereas the first statewide suffrage organization, the Illinois Women Suffrage Association, was established in 1869, becoming the Illinois Equal Suffrage Association in 1891. And whereas also in 1891, Illinois enacted a law allowing women the right to vote for elective school offices. And whereas in 1913, Illinois enacted the Presidential Suffrage Bill, which gave Illinois women the right to vote in federal and municipal elections, not otherwise restricted to men under the Illinois Constitution. And whereas with the enactment of that law, Illinois became the first state east of the Mississippi River to give women such right to vote for President of the United States, and is credited with being a major positive influence in advancing the women's suffrage movement in the United States. And whereas on June 4, 1919, the proposed 19th Amendment to the United States Constitution was passed by the United States Congress and sent to the states for ratification. And whereas 100 years ago, on June 10, 1919, Illinois became the first state to ratify the 19th Amendment, one hour prior to Wisconsin. And whereas Illinois led the way for the necessary three force of the states to ratify the 19th Amendment, which became part of the Constitution, on August 26, 1920. Now therefore I, Robert T. Blinsky, Village President of the Village of Wilmette, do hereby proclaim, June 10, 2019, a day to celebrate women's right to vote and the important role Illinois played in achieving that right in the United States. Item 4.4, under the Report of Officers, is Announcement of the Designation of Julie Wolf as Chair of the Environmental and Energy Commission. As we mentioned at our last meeting, Trustee Wolf finished her eight years of service on the Village Board, and on the Consent Agenda tonight was approved as a member of the Environmental and Energy Commission. And I believe it's, I have the authority to appoint her as the Chair of the Commission. So in using that authority, I'm designating Julie Wolf as Chair of the Environmental and Energy Commission. Item 4.5 is Announcement of Cancellation of the August 13, 2019 Regular Village Board Meeting. And Item 4.6 is a Presentation by Tesca Consultants for the Downtown Streetscape Project. Turn it over to Bridgette. Okay, Ms. Berger.
Before we get going, I just want to clarify. I think you're not asking for, this is an informational presentation. This is, here's what we're thinking about, and you're not asking for decisions from us tonight. Of course, if we have any initial comments, you'd welcome those. But a thought that I had, and I guess I would make a request of the staff, that after you sort of go through this presentation, I think it would be helpful to sort of frame the discussion that will take place on this topic by laying out at least staff's point of view on how we might prioritize these improvements, because you need dollars next to things, and you need priorities, and the staff's input to sort of set the stage would be helpful for our discussion. So I'll make that request now, before you start to present. But tonight, that is the goal, right? Sort of information for the Board.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes. First, I'd like to thank the Village Board for the opportunity to speak to you tonight on our concept plans for the Downtown Streetscape Project. You may know that we received about $1 million from the State of Illinois through their Illinois Transportation Enhancement Program. It stands for ITEP. And we were successful receiving that grant, much in part because we added this project onto our already federally funded Central Avenue project, which is scheduled about a year from now to begin. The plan would be to build both the Downtown Streetscape Project as well as Central Avenue at the same time. As President Blinsky mentioned, our goal tonight is to receive some initial feedback and discussion on the concept plans, but more likely, we'll have a better feel for the village's financial health in July, in conjunction with the mid-year financial review, so the Village Board can start thinking about prioritizing how this project fits in with the rest of the infrastructure needs. So you'll see tonight, we have a base project as well as many optional items, and so if the Village Board decides to fund some of those optional items locally, we would need to make a decision by August of this year. And that's so we can stay on track to meet the state's requirements to get on a bid letting in April. So that's our timeline, and Jody will go through that a little bit more. So with that as an introduction, I'd like to introduce Jody Mariano from Tesca Associates and Dave Block. Dave is from Trans Systems. He's representing the lead consultant on the project. And just a little bit about Jody. Jody is a principal urban designer and leads the public space practice at Tesca Associates in Evanston. The practice focuses on community engagement designed to guide the planning and development of public spaces, such as streetscapes, parks, and plazas. Recent projects completed under Jody's supervision include campus landscapes at Northwestern University and Evanston's Fountain Square Plaza. We are delighted to have Jody lead our streetscape efforts.
Welcome. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much for having me. We were thrilled to have this opportunity to work with your wonderful community and staff on this project. And so just as Bridgette mentioned, I was going to go through an overview of the streetscape plan, and we welcome comments that you all might have after. I'm just going to see if I can make this bigger. Great. So, and I understand that the, these materials were in your packets, and so my plan was to go through these materials in about 20 minutes or so, so that we can get time for Q and A and discussion afterwards. But generally, what we wanted to do is talk a little bit about the community outreach program, what we heard from the residents of Wilmette and the business owners, and then also go over some of the preliminary streetscape concepts and their associated conceptual costs, and then speak to next steps. So Tesca got involved with this project after the Central Avenue Phase 1 project was completed. And so our involvement happened in the summer of last year with a lot of wonderful groundwork that took place before that. So we were able to start this project with a lot of knowns. This slide on the right-hand side shows the things that were already determined as a result of the Phase 1 plan. So things like maintaining existing on-street parking as it is, maintaining the historic light poles, these are all things that the public spoke up about for that Phase 1 plan. So we incorporated all of that into our streetscape planning. Our focus area is the downtown streetscapes along Wilmette and Central Avenue. As Bridgette mentioned, there is a great funding source that's included in here, both from ITEP and also from the Surface Transportation Program. So with all of this in mind, we've been working diligently to figure out how we can get the most bang for our buck with the dollars that we have and the amount of area and the heightened interest that we've had from the community. This is the, just an overall budget that's organized by project types. So the project locations are on the right-hand side. We're looking at the downtown streetscape between Central, along Central and Wilmette Avenues. We're also looking at the Village Green, and I'll go over the details of these. Veterans Park...
And the Village Green, for people who don't know, is in front of Village Hall.
Yes, the Village Green or Village Hall Green.
The grass in front of Village Hall.
Correct. Thank you. Veterans Park is an area that there is interest to do improvements, and also wayfinding signage. The village already has signage in place, so it's piggybacking on that design to expand that, to draw folks from the corridors into the downtown area. So as you heard, we have organized the presentation based on what we call the base project. So these are the basic elements that are required just to provide a clean, safe, open, and welcoming streetscape. In the outreach, we heard desires for other enhancements that aren't necessarily needed for ADA access, for instance, or clean, open sidewalks, but it takes it to sort of another level of placemaking and welcoming downtown. So those are the things that we've lumped into this additional cost for optional enhancements category. So of course, we all know we can't afford everything, but part of this exercise is to understand, in addition to the base cost things that are needed for public safety and a welcoming, safe streetscape, what elements can we add to that to get the most bang for our buck? We spent some time researching some history, and something that we thought was really interesting was dating back even to 1977. The wide sidewalks were always intended to be this place for the community to gather in downtown. And downtown is such a beloved place, we heard lots of interest and positive comments about how great it is right now with all of the restaurants in downtown. People are coming here from all over the North Shore to spend their time. And so what can we do to enhance that and have people stay a little bit longer? So the areas that we're focused on, Wilmette and Central Avenues. We're looking at Wilmette Avenue from the east side of the railroad tracks up to Lake Avenue, and we're looking at Central Street, again, from the east side of the railroad tracks up to 11th Street. Some things that are beloved and we don't want to change is we want to continue to make sidewalks clear and open. We want to provide all the outdoor dining that we can that's out there today. That's a real draw for downtown. We want to maintain the historic light poles, the on-street parking. We heard lots of great comments about how much people love those hanging baskets, and so those are something that would, you know, want to stay. But with all that, there are still some opportunities to make the sidewalks safer, to improve the paving so it doesn't dip so much, and to replace some of the trees that are failing. Along the Village Hall Green area, this is the area in front of Village Hall, as you know. Things that don't want to change, of course, is that there is a memorial for veterans in this area. There is a fountain, of course. These things would want to stay. But surrounding the area, we do find opportunities to make it more open and welcoming, maybe editing out some of the plantings to make it more visible into the downtown and make people feel like they can be drawn into the Village Hall Green area where all the events are. The third place is the Veterans Park area. Again, the things that wouldn't want to change is that there's a flagpole there, there's a memorial. There are some of the historic village pavers, which are wonderful and want to stay, but need to be reset so that they're safer and not so uneven. Some of the things that we heard about Veterans Park is, a lot of folks that we talked to didn't understand why it's called Veterans Park, and so part of our charge is to make that more apparent, and I'll show you some of those ideas, too. So when we began in the summer of last year, we embarked on a variety of different input methods. We really wanted to get ideas from the community, because this is the community space. We worked with village staff and leadership. There is a dedicated project website page where we've been posting information, we've been receiving comments. Our staff attended the Music on the Green event in August of last year. We also spent a couple of days here at Village Hall doing a series of focus group meetings. And so we met with stakeholders in the downtown. They're listed here. But, you know, it was a way for us to understand not only what the community wants to see in downtown, but also how businesses and destinations in downtown use downtown, to make sure that we can continue to make this useful for them. We had a streetscape poll that ran from August to November, and we also had a public meeting last February. When we did the poll, the poll was distributed via an online survey. It was also distributed via paper surveys. There was an input box downstairs at the counter. We got 647 responses, which was a pretty good response. We heard a lot of interesting things. We heard a lot of things that we had a sense might be the case, but it's always helpful to have confirmation on these things. So when we asked, you know, what are the most reasons that people come to downtown Wilmette? 92% restaurants, 56% for the shopping. The top-rated amenities are the trees and the plantings, and no surprise, the outdoor dining. So that tells us that we want to make sure we support that. Potential improvements for the Village Green. We heard a lot of interest about accommodating additional seating. There already is some seating, but can we provide even more and expanding the walkways even more to make it more welcoming for gathering? And we asked about what would people like to see in Veterans Park? And by the way, with all of these, there was always a space for comments, so it was helpful to read what people were really thinking. And so with Veterans Park, there was a lot of mixed reviews when we asked about a kid's play area. A lot of concern about being disrespectful perhaps to the Veterans Park, and maybe there's a way to make the Veterans Park more of an interpretational type of a place, a more respectful place for veterans. But everybody agreed, 59% agreed, public seating areas was certainly important. So key takeaways, these are images from that, the Music on the Green event, but everybody loves downtown, and it's not a surprise. People want to continue to make it a safe and attractive place for people to gather. Anything that happens in the future should always maintain open access to the sidewalks and to the businesses. Again, to keep the hanging baskets, and the tree lighting was the other thing people love. Everyone loves the tree lighting that's in downtown. And then there was also some requests to incorporate more sustainable features in the downtown, such as native plantings. We talked about things like rain gardens, and so those are some main takeaways. So I'm going to go through the different areas. This here is Wilmette Avenue and Central Avenue. One of the things that we looked at early on is that right at these intersections happens to be the place where a lot of downtown restaurants are, and there's already these really wide sidewalk areas. So we saw this as a great opportunity to provide additional placemaking features, additional benches and plantings in those corners. Also, looking at the intersection, let's see if I can point to things here. This area right here, at the, sort of at the nose of the Village Green, there, we saw this as an opportunity to open this space up. Today, there is, the Christmas tree is right in this area, but if we were to relocate the Christmas tree, or I should say, remove the Christmas tree and add a new one to an area over to the side by Central Avenue on the Village Green, we saw this as an opportunity to open this space up and make it more welcoming to, between downtown, streetscape and the Village Hall Green area.
And to get rid of our ugly traffic signal there on the corner.
Traffic signals are part of the streetscape plan, yes, absolutely. Those would be, I know they were at one point considered very, very modern. But suffice it to say, the intersection here is Central and Wilmette. This is, this is what we saw as sort of the big show. I mean, when you get right into the heart of downtown, this is the place where people are coming in from the corridors, and we really could make a big statement with some additional features. And I'll get into some of the details of those. So each of those little bumpouts, this is sort of a rendering that shows how things could be clustered. So for instance, this is Valley Lodge Tavern. We've got the crosswalks in these areas. And then today, we have planters that are, you know, kind of occupying this zone next to where cars are parked. And what we saw as an opportunity was to maximize the sidewalk space in front of the businesses and relocate the planters closer to the curbs, where we don't want people to sit anyways. We want them to be buffered from the traffic. So these half-circle or half-moon areas would be the planters. And then these sort of little wood bars are bench seating. So we have opportunities for sort of casual seating areas. And then we understand that there is interest in additional bike racks and site furnishings, so bike racks would be clustered up against the planters in these areas. The existing light poles would just be repainted, so these are generally in the same locations where light poles are today. But we did see that there is an opportunity to add some low-level sort of decorative light ceilings, festoon-type lighting, so that's what this triangular shape represents, and again, additional seating. So these blue dots represent outdoor café tables by the businesses. Those would, those would still be, you know, to the businesses prerogative as to whether they wanted to set those out, but we just always want to leave space for those things and cluster the improvements towards the curbs and in clustered areas like this.
And is this an expanded, so is the curb bumped out here, or is this the existing curb today?
It's your existing curb.
It's the existing curb.
So just to follow on what we learned in the Phase 1, no changes to the on-street parking. So while the curbs would be new, they would follow the geometry of what's there. The bike racks that were selected by staff are shown here on the left. So a rendering of what that would look like if you were to stand looking at Valley Lodge Tavern, and it always helps to show these on gray, crummy days, because it can only look better from there. But, you know, what you see here is, this is the painted crosswalk. There are, now, these are not brick pavers. These are precast concrete pavers, which are starting to settle a little bit. Then there's planters that are in the background here. What we're proposing to do is push those planters up to the, you know, close to the edge of the curb and select salt-tolerant plantings, but what those will do is stay very low, but provide that buffer for the folks on the sidewalks. So I'm going to show you two renderings. The first one will be what we call the base improvement. So this is that first column of the cost estimate. The base improvements are the planters that are here at the curbs. The bike racks are here in the background. These blue tables and chairs are not part of the cost estimate, but these would be the restaurants' furnishings. And then just clean, open, concrete sidewalks that would, you know, kind of flow through the space. And then bench seating hugging these planters, so there's some benches sort of in the background here. And of course, the new, the painted light poles and the new traffic signal and hanging baskets. So this is the base project, and then if we were to apply the additional optional enhancements, those would be all the things on top of this. And those would be things like decorative lighting overhead, decorative unit pavers, some, you know, other types of seating elements, concrete seat walls, and circular wood benches. So the thing that I do want to mention is, you know, while we kind of tested all of these different ideas for what could be part of the optional enhancements, in our experience, while the red pavers do have a big impact visually, when you're walking in a downtown streetscape, and this is just personal opinion, when there's a vertical element, it's much more obvious than when there's something flat on the floor. So it's just something to kind of keep in the backs of our minds, that for the, for the cost, if we wanted to, you know, think about other ways to spend our pennies, the vertical elements, we believe, has a stronger impact on the streetscape.
So can you just, sorry. No, go ahead. Just so I understand the numbers. So the additional cost on here of $851,000, the decorative paving of that costs $345?
Correct.
And what's a decorative paving versus decorative unit pavers? Or is that all the same thing?
It's all the same.
I'm just, okay.
Yeah, it's all the same thing.
It's just, that's just breaking down, that that's a big chunk of it.
Correct, yeah. So, so the, so the, and this is for, for the entire downtown streetscape, by the way. This isn't just for this intersection, of course, yeah.
That was going to be my ask, okay.
Yeah. But, but, right. So for the entire downtown streetscape along Central and Wilmette, the optional additional would be eight-hundred-and-fifty-one. Of that eight-hundred-and-fifty-one, three-four, three-forty-five is for the decorative paving. So it's a big piece. Decorative paving in a downtown streetscape typically gets installed on top of a concrete base. So you're basically paying for a concrete sidewalk, then the pavers on top. That helps them from settling.
And is the, is the picture that's a couple back, that shows the aerial map, is that the extent of the one, that one? Is this the extent of what the decorative paving would be?
No, oh, yes. Well, I take that back. So, the, that cost is for-
I think there was one that had, that actually, if you go up a couple more-
There is. Yeah, the cost is for all of Wilmette and all of Central.
Oh, for all, all of it?
Yeah. But we don't have decorative paving everywhere. We just have it at a couple of key intersections.
Okay, that's what I'm curious, like, so three-forty-five, what is that? Is it up there in that, in the corner there?
So I can scroll through, it's that area that you see in red. Not including the Village Hall. That's, this area is broken out into a different budget.
Right.
But it does include this entire intersection area, the crosswalks and the intersections. And then I'll jump ahead. So if we continue down Wilmette Avenue, there are no decorative pavers proposed along Wilmette. This is all jointed concrete sidewalks with tree pits. Around Depot Nuevo, the streetscape transitions from concrete with tree pits to trees and open parkway lawn areas. So along Wilmette, no other decorative paving. Along Central, the optional decorative paving includes this area in front of the theater and the crosswalk. These, these materials, or these proposals came from the downtown plan that the village undertook a few years ago. So we wanted to make sure that we were at least incorporating those things, because it was good planning that was done. But the decorative paving here at the Veterans Park, that is part of the Veterans Park budget.
Okay.
Can I ask a question about the durability of those pavers? I've noticed the ones near Fourth and Linden are in terrible shape. Do they not hold up well to salt and sidewalk plowing and so forth?
Fourth and Linden, I can't picture. But the ones that are right in downtown, at Central and Wilmette, those are precast concrete. And those don't tend to have as long of a life as, as far as color goes, as compared to clay pavers. So the, the pavers that are at Veterans Park, for instance, those are historic, and those are hard to find anymore. But if we were to use pavers in the streetscape, the recommendation would be to go with a clay brick paver and to install it on a proper concrete base, and to select pavers that have the right thickness. I don't know the thickness of the concrete pavers that are in place, but you're right, they're not holding up today.
I, I want to actually expand on that, because I know we have them at Fourth and Linden, but we also have those pavers all along Sheridan Road. And, I mean, I, I know that people have gotten actually potholes as a result of that. So, are we, are those going to be different? Are those different? Are the, are you proposing different kinds of crosswalk bricks, for lack of a better word, than what we currently put in place on Sheridan Road? And I just kind of want to understand, you know, how we got to the place, you know, I just want to understand that.
Sure, yeah. So, so the, my recollection is that the pavers in Sheridan Road are clay brick pavers. And so if we were to incorporate pavers into the streetscape, the recommendation that we would have would be to match what's been done on Sheridan Road. But again-
So I, if anybody wants to see it, I took a picture today of the pavers on Sheridan Road. And, I mean, we've already patched it. I don't think that's even been there that long. I'd be curious how long we've had that. But we've already patched it once, there's a big hole in the pavers on Sheridan Road. And I know a number of residents who have actually gotten a pothole before we actually replaced it. So I think that's just something we should be thinking about, about the durability of those crosswalks.
And this is, the one, the crosswalks in Sheridan Road are what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Well, and even, you know, even more reason, you know, to the comment earlier, jointed concrete with a very simple jointing pattern and broom finish can be a wonderful improvement to the streetscape. It's very durable, it holds up well, and it allows the village to have dollars to spend on other vertical elements that are more obvious.
I'm sorry, can I ask another question if you went back?
Of course, sure.
Just on, I believe it was this page. So, obviously, we got lots of feedback that people are very interested in outdoor dining. So are we taking, are we taking away spots from, like, Valley Lodge? Or are we just relocate, because if I look at the diagram here, not this one, maybe the-
The one back.
It was the one back that had the circles, yeah.
It shows kind of five tables on that one side. And I know they have a lot more outdoor tables than five along that one side. It looks like you're putting some on the other side. But does that get into kind of people walking down the sidewalk some, and interfere with people?
So, the, so what's out there today is there are planters that are, you know, a planter is generally in this area. So what we've, what we propose is to take that planter, general planter square footage, and relocate it from this area to further out to the road. This circular planter area is one of those additional optional enhancements, which does take up some space from the tables. Although it could also become part of a seating area for the restaurants if they wanted to. But the intent is not to take away spots from the outdoor dining. It's just to relocate it so that their, the planters are not in the middle of the sidewalk, but closer to the, to the curb.
So, the five circles may not be representative of only five tables? Is that another way to think about it, or not?
That's correct. I mean, it would depend on, you know, what kinds of tables they have and how they like to arrange them. Some of those tables in downtown are up against the curb. Some of them are up against the building facade. We don't have a strong preference either way, but we always do want to make sure that we have at least six-foot clear zone, clear zone for walking path between tables and buildings.
But to Trustee Dot's point, I think that's something we should be cognizant of. Whether we're given, particularly given how high it ranked on everybody's things they like about. Let's, let's fix downtown and take away the things they like the most.
Exactly.
Right. Let's not do that.
Oops, no, that's a good point.
Valley Lodge has six tables up on the central side. They don't have any on the Wilmette side. So under this scenario, there's actually an opportunity to expand their seating options. So that's-
It would be good to know, just-
It's only six.
Really? Just show how much, I would think, for every restaurant, we just want to know how much outdoor seating they have today, and how much they would get under this new plan.
Yeah.
Just take the data.
Yep.
That's a good point.
Good question. Yeah. Is there a standard amount of space that a bike rack would need for, you know, as part of the design here? I'm thinking about how crowded that would be for those tables if they were placed as depicted here.
Yeah, so typically, bike racks are spaced three feet apart, if they're a standalone bike rack like that. So the bike racks are shown, you know, in this area here. They're spaced three feet apart, and a bike would be taking up about six feet of space. So the nose of the bike would be up close to the planter, and then the back part of the bike would be behind it. So when the bikes are in this position, there would be six feet of clear zone in this sidewalk here.
And do you think that's accounted for on the Wilmette Avenue side as well?
Yeah, it's the same, the same spacing is applied there.
And, you know, from an urban design point of view, you know, where, what is the optimal location for a bike rack? You know, is it, you know, because you wouldn't put, you don't necessarily want your parking on top of your sitting area, but is it different when you think about bikes because of just, you know, how it works? Or, or do you put bike racks a half a block away? Or how do you think about that?
So, it's, it's tough. I mean, because, you know, you want to make it convenient for people, but you don't want to have a whole sea of bike racks in one location that nobody will use. Typically, what we've found has been most successful in downtown, such as this one, is that if we cluster them in small groupings throughout the downtown, it gives people a place to, you know, park their bike, hop on, hop on and off, walk around downtown a little bit, get back on their bike and move around. If we were to, for instance, dignitate a couple of parking spaces at the metro lot and fill it all up with bike racks, they might not get as much use, for instance.
So, it's just the way people use it, as opposed to a car, they're used to having to sort of go to a big parking lot. With your bikes, you sort of want to ride your bike closer to wherever your destination is and hope there's a good place to put it. And if we put things there, they should get used.
Yeah, that's generally how it's worked, yeah.
Okay.
I guess my, this is just a general question about, you know, what specific level of detail should we actually be focusing on right now? Because, I mean, are we kind of trying to get the big picture idea? Or are we trying to say, I don't want this bench here, and I don't want this bike rack here? I think we might be getting-
No, I think, I think this is, this is Q and A, and big picture for sure. And then if the staff comes back to us with, first off, you know, we have to figure out the money and the like. And frankly, I'm not sure the village board is the body that's supposed to be, you know, doing urban design, right? As we have professionals and staff for. So, I agree with, I think what you're saying, we shouldn't be debating all that stuff. But I think it is, this is an opportunity to ask questions and not say, well, I think it belongs here or there. So I agree with what you're saying. I think, Trustee Plunkett, which is, are we getting in the weeds a little too far?
But I will say, I appreciate the comments, because I feel like great stuff comes out of this review for us, that we can go back and, and figure out how many tables and chairs the establishments have, and how many bike racks, you know, maybe are appropriate. So, we developed this level of concept level design just so we can come at some conceptual cost, just so we know what we're talking about.
Right.
But for sure, after the, after the next review, we would be going back and revising the drawings even further to more concrete.
Trustee Dot.
And, and so, to both points, I guess, and I guess my perspective a little bit would be, I think we should be careful having bike racks where we're having people sitting and eating, just in too close to proximity. So, and if you look at the diagram, or one of the pictures, it kind of shows what it's going to look like at the view looking east along South Side of that picture. It's not showing bike racks there. I just think we should be careful. I think your question, President Polinski, about where bikes should be placed is a really good one, and one I think we should just be thinking about, because it does have an effect if, you know, because otherwise, bikes are coming in while you're trying to kind of sit down and eat. I mean, so I just think that's, from my perspective more broadly, I, I have a concern about that location being too close to where people would be eating. And then you get, because we already have issues and feedback we've received from residents about people biking down the sidewalk. And so if we have bike racks right where people, they're going to bike right past where people are eating to get to the bike rack.
Okay. So, we can talk about bike, you know we're interested in bike racks and their locations.
I know you're interested in bike racks, yeah, absolutely. So, yeah, so you're right. The bike racks that are shown in this rendering, for instance, are, are here. And so there would be bikes close to where people are sitting. If we wanted to scale back the bikes, we can certainly do that. You know, in, in our experience, we've found that having a lot of uses and a lot of modes of travel in the same area helps draw activity to one another. People are generally careful of one another when, when there's a lot of movement and activity in the way. But I think it's definitely something we should, we should talk about, continue to look at. So I've already talked about this, this area here along Wilmette Avenue. And then here's the section along Central Avenue. Again, trees and planter pits, light poles being repainted, simple jointed concrete with a broom finish, and then the option for decorative paving between the Wilmette Theater and that mid-block crossing.
Why'd you choose that for decorative?
Why did we choose?
To have the decorative paving in front of the theater, that strip.
So, again, this came directly from the downtown plan that was prepared for, for Wilmette. I think it was ten or so years ago.
Are we talking about the Village Center master plan?
So this came out of that, out of that plan.
Okay.
But I think the concept, and we weren't involved in that plan, but I think the concept at that time was, because so many people are walking between this parking lot and the theater to kind of create that visual connection. But again, it's, you know, it's something to think about, not necessarily set in stone at this point. Veterans Park, so Veterans Park, you know, as you know, out there today, we have, you know, rows of shrubs along, well, this is the parking lot, and Central is up here. The flagpole is in this area. What we heard was, for one, the pavers are, need to be reset, that's obvious. The other thing that we heard was, what can we do to make it more apparent as to this being Veterans Park? And what kind of interpretation can we provide to acknowledge veterans? And so, we've depicted a couple of options here that I'll show you in the next view. But I wanted to point out that one of the things that we recommended as part of holding this pavement together is resetting the paving in the center, but then also preparing a simple concrete planter curb around the perimeter of this that holds all of the plantings together and provides places to sit. When we met with the veterans groups, we heard some interesting ideas about, you know, how can we commemorate the five military services? How can we do some interpretive signage in places for, you know, people to sit and gather? So, this is the view looking south to Veterans Park. There is a substantial canopy of trees that are, for the most part, in good condition. We've got some existing lights. Here is the flagpole. If this were to have those base improvements applied, this would have the reset pavers along the floor, and then that concrete curb that winds around the perimeter with plantings in between the curb and the wall. The existing trees, of course, are intact. And then the base project incorporated this memorial wall that would have the five military service seals or something similar, per what we heard from the veterans. And then another optional enhancement would be to incorporate some additional signage to let folks know that this is a Veterans Park. In discussions with the Historical Society, we learned that they were interested in utilizing some historic photographs to help tell the story about downtown Wilmette and about veterans. So that was something that was incorporated here, too. This is a sign also in the front that could act as a seat wall.
I have a question about that. One of the things that, to me, makes Veterans Park today unattractive is that you look straight into that parking lot.
Yeah.
And I don't see anything in that plan that really changes that, except sort of fog.
The fog.
So when you look at your rendering, there's just fog that kind of gets rid of it. But have you thought about something more permanent to sort of obscure the-
I'm not sure why this is, this is kind of conking.
Right, the, all, the existing, all there is is sort of that trellis fence there, kind of, sort of.
I'm not sure how I can get this to go back on. Oh, there it is.
So when you look at this, you look straight at that parking lot. And your eyes drawn to that parking lot, essentially.
That's right. There is a fence here.
Yeah.
And so the intent is that the fence would stay where it is, and then plantings in front of the fence. I'm afraid to touch it. Um, but yet, we don't have a lot of space back there, but the intent was to keep the fence as it is and plantings up against the fence. So the new plantings up against the fence would provide some screening back here. So that's, that's what the taller shrubs back here are intended to sh- But we were not intending to remove that fence. It's, it's a good-conditioned fence, and it does its job screening the parking lot.
Yep.
Uh, so I see some of the, you know, in the optional for the Village Green and across, that overhead lighting, I know they've installed that in Evanston, kind of in their square. I kind of thought that that was in discussion with Veterans Park. I mean, it seems like a great, smaller location to have that lighting across. Is there, is that-
Yeah, absolutely. Lighting wasn't part of this budget, but it was something that we looked at early on, and certainly can be something put back. The lighting, so there could be a different, different kinds of lighting. If we wanted that string lighting, this armature, for instance, could provide support for string lighting. It could be really lovely. We do have to kind of be careful of the trees, of course, but I think there's still space to do it. We could also look at uplighting if we wanted to have some other, you know, lighting effects. But lighting would really go a long way to help this park, because it's, it's kind of dim.
Well, philosophically, sort of the question is, is this a park, or is it a memorial?
Well, that was actually going to be my question.
And this makes it look like it's much more of a memorial than a park. And I'm not sure that's the approach we're trying to take here. I don't know if we are or not, but-
Well, this is actually, I maybe should know the answer to this, but do we have a veterans memorial at Village Green?
Yes.
And so, is, I mean-
No, that's, it's actually for, that's the names of persons who died in, or was, as opposed to honoring all veterans, which is Veterans Park.
So it's actually like a Memorial Day one at Village Hall and a Veterans Day one at Veterans Park?
Literally, the Memorial Day ceremonies here and the Veterans Day ceremony is the-
Okay, that's- There is a really small memorial at the base of the existing light pole.
Right, in the, inside of the, yeah.
Yeah, so I think to your point, the, for example, though, people are kind of meant to pass through here to get to a parking lot and do so in the evening. The lighting's pretty thin there. So festoon lighting, which is great for your dining areas, isn't necessarily in the theme of that park, but uplighting the trees. Would they have that subdued type of pathway lighting, perhaps? Can give a dramatic effect in the evening that's still kind of subdued and respectful, and also is more welcoming to people trying to get through to the parking lot, I suppose.
Just, having that more as a memorial, does that kind of take out the possibility of, you know, having evening, I don't know, I would say evening, music, events? I, I guess that's kind of maybe the concept that we need to decide, but it just seems like-
Is it a park or is it a memorial?
Right.
Are you supposed to be quiet when you walk through there, or can you have a conversation, or, you know, like?
Right, or can it be both? I mean, can you have, can it be a multi- I mean, can you have, can it be a multi-use space? Is that appropriate? That it, you know, can it do all those things? I mean, downtown Wilmette is not that big and, you know, I'm sure people would like to use different spaces in different ways. And is that something that we should talk about? I don't know.
There is certainly nothing disrespectful about sitting outside in a, you know, interpretive space like this and, you know, having an ice cream cone or a coffee or reading a book. And I think that was what we heard in the outreach, is that people would love to use this space. Right now, it's a space that they just kind of, you know, race through.
It's a cut through. It's how you get to the parking lot, right? That's what it is.
But there is a craving for more spaces for people to sit and gather and have, you know, quiet space. If it were to be programmed, you know, I, I couldn't imagine that, you know, it would be, I think it would only be a positive thing to activate this space even more.
Yeah, I mean, for what it's worth, because you're looking for our initial feedback, I'm much more in the minimalist camp. Make it nicer, make it a place where people can hang out. But I'm not a big fan of the, the concept of the, of the pictures and of the, you know, of the, of the beams. And obviously, anybody else who has an opinion, please feel free to share it, but.
We heard a lot of that at the public meeting, too, by the way. A lot of people didn't like the beams.
It seems like it's a small area to begin with and that gives it a kind of a closed-in, perhaps even darker sense.
Well, and to be clear, I think, to residents, this is a park and that's what we're, you know, in a path through to get, we have a memorial. That's why I was kind of asking. That's at the Village Hall.
Right.
Or the Village Center, whatever we're going to call that.
Right. But, yeah, we could, we could do some sort of enhancement to the memorial element of it, but I think a radical change, you know, cleaning it up, maybe consider a radical change, because it's considered the shape it's in, but, yeah.
Thank you. I'll keep going, but I appreciate you kind of giving us feedback as we move through. So, speaking of Village Green, this is the last area to talk about. So, this is a zoomed-in version of Village Green. So as I mentioned, you know, we looked at, you know, this area is one of those bumpouts that exists today that could handle some more seating. We also wanted to open up this space in here by relocating or removing the holiday tree and moving it someplace else. The fountain is here today with the seating. What we heard was a desire for expanded seating, more spaces for people to gather. And so, the, the concept was to expand the paving around it to make for more spaces. There's a little bit of grade change and so we think that in doing that, that would create a couple of concrete steps in this area, which could be additional places for people to sit informally. Also, if the holiday tree was relocated to this area here, there could be a sort of a mini paved space around there, a mini plaza with some seating around it. And so let me go to, to the views. So there's a couple of views to talk about Village Hall. This first one is looking right at the intersection, looking straight to Village Hall. It's really hard to see. The building, of course, the holiday tree is right there in the middle. So if that holiday tree, and by the way, not just the holiday tree, but in this area here, right behind, right in front of the tree, but kind of behind those views, there is a drinking fountain and a memorial, or not a memorial, there's a sign kiosk that is made of the same material as your granite memorial. So it's kind of of that same era, but it really is disguised. It's buried right back here. So what we wanted to do is open this hall up. And so, if we were to open that up, then you'd be at the intersection, you'd get this long view right into Village Hall. There's the fountain and the flag in the background. Because the memorial in the background rises up, we think that this would be a great opportunity for sort of a hillside seating that you could sit. Let me switch to this. So memorial is right here. But you could sit in this hill with your back to the Village Hall and have this great big open lawn space. So, we understand that today and I've watched some of the, the music events. They set up on the, the space here in front of the Village Hall and people kind of gather around to watch. Could be another alternative to have an even, you know, more clear, open space for, for small music groups to set up. But anyway, that's, that's, that would be this view here. Here's the existing drinking fountain and your kiosk is there. And again, just like before, planter beds that are hugging the curb with some seating that are, you know, hugging the planter beds. And then, a low seat wall that kind of frames the space as compared to the, to the Village Hall green in the background. So this is the base project and again, it's just very simple, clean, concrete with a joint pattern and benches. If it were enhanced with some of those elements that we've talked about, it could look something like this. Again, this would be those overhead festoon lights. Here is that circular bench that we talked about. And then, of course, the decorative paving. Another view, so you can tell we were starting to do this stuff in the wintertime, but this is looking at Village Hall from Central. If that tree were to be relocated, it could look something like this. Oh, and by the way, something that we sort of, you know, talked about early on is that there is a Village Hall sign that's sort of tucked into this masonry wall, but you really don't know that it's Village Hall if you can't see that sign, if you don't already know that it is. So, one of the thoughts is that on the face of the building, could be an opportunity to announce the Village Hall up here. So, so there's an opportunity for signage there. This is where the new holiday tree could be located with this little plaza space around it that kind of ramps up to the fountain area and that central seating area in the background. That would be wintertime. Oh, go on.
So, in, in, in sort of the most simplest view, you've got all this extra space around Village Hall, sort of on this south side of Central, and instead, you're moving it to the corner where it can be much more impactful. Nobody's, nobody's hanging out on the side of Village Hall, you know, across the street from the cleaners and the rock house, but they might hang out at the corner and actually create sort of a nice feel there and a buzz where people could have a cup of coffee and, you know, you know, hang out and the like.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, even when it's not wintertime, it could still be a comfortable place to sit. You'd have some buffering from the road. You know, you'd have, you know, lots of opportunities for benches and movable seating in the background. And again, you know, it could be concrete, could be decorative pavers. But that's, that's what it would look like if we took away the snow.
I know. Oh, go ahead. Well, I know trees are sometimes a touchy subject, but I thought we had discussed in the past that the holiday tree might be sort of on its last legs anyway.
Sort of would be charitable.
Yeah, thank you. I meant to say that we did get a report from the village forester who has reviewed this, the existing holiday tree. And I think that the words were that it came back moderate but declining. So, it's one of those things that, you know, trees have a lifespan. Similarly, there are some understory trees at Village Hall Green that are also not in great condition. And so, this would be an opportunity to kind of edit some of those things out, make the space, you know, kind of wider and more open.
That tree will eventually have to be removed at some point in the future. So, if, if the board gets to the point where it decides that it would like to do something more creative with the lawn in front of the Village Hall, I, I don't think the staff would recommend pulling back from that just to save one declining tree. If this is the opportunity to do it, then it's the opportunity to do it. It's going to have to get done at some point, anyway.
I was just going to ask if you've received any feedback on that holiday tree and removing it or, you know, even if we were, just do people like the location? I'm just curious. I mean, obviously, even if it's deteriorated and there's nothing that says we can't replace it with something else, and I'm just curious what feedback you've heard on that.
Sure. So when you asked the question, you know, how do you feel about the existing holiday tree and should we move it? If you ask that question sort of separate of this context, it's hard to get a good response. So when we had this presentation in February and we shared this material with the public, and I think 35 folks attended that public meeting, there was a lot of conversation afterwards that said, people came up to us and said, you know, I didn't really think I cared that much about the tree, but I really like being able to see Village Hall from the street. So, if it's, you know, remove the tree so that we can get a better view to Village Hall, we got some good response for that.
That's interesting. It's not like I think Village Hall is.
Yeah, no, it's, well, that's a whole nother discussion. Which also, I'm told, was deemed very modern at the time, so.
Lastly, there already is existing signage in downtown. We did hear a lot of feedback from the chamber and from businesses wanting to provide more visibility to the businesses from the corridors. And so, we've developed a conceptual level signage plan that provides some directional information and also information to the public parking lots, which already have their own signs. And then, you know, an events kiosk and also some bicycle directional signs. We did present a few different color options for these signs to the public meeting and the one that was most highly voted on was this one that's here at the top, the dark color with the gold accents. And so what you're looking at is the face of the sign would have the directional information, the backside of the sign would have the village's logo.
Yeah, and I have heard from businesses in terms of a desire to try to, you know, the Bahai Temple is one of the most visited tourist attractions in all of the Chicago area.
Yeah.
And yet, you know, if we could draw some percentage of that traffic to our beautiful, quaint, historic downtown area, that would be a boost to shops and restaurants and the like, so.
Absolutely.
Because I don't think we do a very, I mean, it's hard to connect. Those are actually, you know, while they're not far away, if you're driving, they're, they're sort of mentally far away. You know, you're going through residential neighborhoods to get there, so.
It would be nice if we could get them to simply stop at Fourth and Linden.
Yeah. Well, unfortunately, there's no place really for them to stop anymore. Yes. And I think, I think there were efforts in the past to try to make that connection to the, to the, what we, what do we call the Linden Center Business District? Linden Square Business District. Right, yeah.
One other signage element, when we talked with the chamber and with businesses, it was, you know, what else can we do to have some temporary signage banners that can draw people in from Green Bay Road? And so, this was a concept that would have permanent poles that would match the light poles with some, you know, permanent banners, but that a overhead fabric banner could be temporarily placed to announce the different fest and events that are happening. So that if you were coming down Green Bay Road, and it carries so much traffic every day, it would be another way to kind of promote downtown to, to the corridors.
That's a view down, that's Wilmette Ave, isn't it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the other things that we looked at were a couple of different palettes for plant materials and site furnishings. We organized them by naturalistic materials and plantings and that's what you're seeing here. On the left are some rain garden-type planters that are depressed so that the drainage from the sidewalks and the roads are captured and slowed into that area before making it into the storm sewer. Naturalized materials can, can, you know, incorporate all sorts of different plantings. You know, we do want to keep maintenance at the forefront of our mind. We also want to make sure that they look seasonal and attractive year-round. And so, you know, we've been working with staff, but would welcome any comments about types of plantings and then the materials for the, gosh, for the site furnishings, are these wooden materials. Not sure why it keeps conking out. So, it's durable wood that's shown here. These are able to withstand our climate. They are tropical hardwoods. Before this completely conked out on me. The second palette are traditional materials and plantings, some more traditional clusters of, of plantings and the planters here and steel and aluminum site furnishings at the right-hand side. So, key takeaways from the open house that we had in February, as I mentioned, about 35 people came. We had a series, we did a presentation just like this. We had a series of activities that people broke out and were able to make selections and provide comments. And so some of the comments that we heard, there was, there was a push for some native plantings. People were in favor of the intersection improvements, making it more pedestrian-friendly. There are very mixed responses to Veterans Park, just like we all were talking about tonight. Does it want to be a park? Does it want to be a playground? How many improvements does it want to have? There was a lot of positive response to the signage. We did ask people to rank their preferences for the optional enhancements, just to get a poll read as to what people were interested in. For the Wilmette and Central streetscape areas, people were the most interested in paving and decorative paving and in the overhead festoon lighting. For the Village Green area, people were most interested in the decorative paving and also more seating, the seat walls and the benches. At Veterans Park, people were most interested in the interpretive signs. For site furnishings, they like natural, the wood materials. They like the natural, sustainable plantings. And that signage concept that was preferred was that tan-on-black concept that we looked at earlier.
But that was, that was 35. I mean, I understand.
That was 35 people, absolutely.
35 people, that's right.
I have a question about that, too. When you talk about, you know, the, especially the takeaways, well, we scrolled down to where that was. Were you, the meeting, you know, in the Veterans Park, is that separate from the poll? I mean, the poll was obviously 650 people almost. Could, could you tell? I mean, were there big, were there differences in that? I think especially like to the overall concept or in the Veterans Park concept?
Sure. So, when we did the poll, the poll was prepared before we had developed any concepts. So the poll was asking much broader questions, you know, things like, you know, what would you like to see happen in downtown? Why do you come to downtown? You know, would you like to see a kids' park in the veterans' area? So we didn't have an opportunity based on timing to distribute the concepts in a poll format, but the poll got us to the concepts and then the concepts were delivered to the public open house. So, so the 35 folks that came to the open house were responding to the concepts that they saw.
That might be, I know we're on a tight timeframe, but that might be something for the staff to consider how we might be able to more broadly disseminate. And I know we have a website and all the rest, but maybe it's E-News, really just trying to drive some, you know, awareness. So that they're, you know, to the, to the extent that the public has a perspective on it. And again, you know, I think to Trustee Plunkett's point, a poll with 600 responses is much different sort of than 35 people, you know, who took the time to come to a, a meeting kind of thing. So, something to think about whether we can figure out a way to disseminate the information better or get some more perspective.
And I think it's a, I think it's an important question because I think we'd want to just understand people's appetite to this, you know, in terms of how much to spend and the fact that we only had 35 people attend the open house. There's obviously a number of reasons for that or whatever, but if you compare that to other open houses we've had, so I asked the staff to look at the data on that and this is very, and that's just, you know, this is just one data point, but it's low in terms of attendance relative to other things, which is just an important thing for us to be thinking about.
Yeah. Yep.
I think I'm coming up to my last slide here, but our schedule is to, I think we're scheduled to come back before the board in July to review this again. The pre-final plans are due to IDA at mid-November. Based on the funding source and all, there is a bid letting scheduled for April 24th, 2020. So construction would begin in June of that year and then construction's anticipated to be complete in 2021. So, there is time yet to, to do these sorts of things, but, you know, as Bridgette mentioned, we're, we're trying to work diligently and quickly to, to make sure that we have, you know, decisions made so materials will be ready.
Right, right. I mean, there is time, but we're on a tight schedule. So, and back to my original comment to, at the beginning, you know, I think it'd be helpful to, for the board, if the staff would help frame sort of the conversation and offer some thoughts in terms of prioritization and the like. You know, just allow us to frame it. Obviously, the decision's going to rest with us, but budget priorities, you know, where we think, where you as, as the, the experts think the bang for the buck is. So it's not just a, a personal taste exercise, but it's a little bit better informed.
We will work on that. The input from the board tonight has been very valuable. This is meant to be kind of the high-level conceptual discussion of what elements we'd like to see or what elements you'd like to see. And your, your input's been, been very helpful. What we'd like to come up with before our next discussion of this is kind of a matrix to help you in decision-making where we can break down for you both relative costs and what the, in our estimation, might be the most impactful or bang-for-the-buck type costs as, as was Jody suggested. The flatwork elements are much less impactful than vertical elements. The enhanced lighting is already being installed in Evanston. Winnetka has, is issuing their contract for it. Now, I think you're at Winnetka's board. They're also doing substantially similar lighting because that has a much more dramatic effect for the, for the restaurants, but we can. effect for the, for the restaurants, but we can kind of rank those in terms of what would be impactful, what the costs of each, and give you a matrix to work with to see what concepts you're, think would be good, good values.
Mr. Frenzer, if, if the final review is in July, when will we see whatever this product is you're speaking of?
Well, we'd like to be back to you in June with a, with this kind of matrix. And eventually, once the board kind of gives us a direction on it, it's still going to involve having to come up with actual drawings. There'll be an opportunity for comment on, when it gets down to the nuts and bolts, both for the board, for the businesses, and residents who use the downtown.
Trustee Dodd.
So President Blinsky, I think the only question I would have for you is just the timing on the schedule here. So I think it's a little hard for us as a board to make a decision on July 23rd before we've reviewed the whole CIP for the year, and I know there's obviously some timing issues. I just want to raise that as an issue, because I think, you know, this is going to be, need to be balanced with lots of other priorities. It's before we're going to really know the situation on the roads and what needs to get done, and so I just want to express my concern around the timing relative to other projects and things like that.
No, it's a, it's a great comment. So what's, I mean, what's, what's driving the timing is our grant money, or you remind us of that? I know Bridget.
It has to do first with our need to submit timely plans to IDOT, I believe.
Yeah. The most critical date on there is November 15th, the 2019, to have our pre-final plans due to IDOT, and the consulting team needs a couple of months to take the element, the optional elements that we want and draft them into the plans. So August, end of August, maybe September, Dave, at the very latest, August is, is really the time that we need to, to get it in the plans.
And we won't have our CIP done by then, but I guess the question, Bridget, is can we bid some of this as alternates? So if the board in July says we'd like to proceed with this, it'd be alternate, so if that decision was made later in the year not to spend that money, we can pull it back?
Sure. Initially, we believe IDOT will allow us to bid these as alternates. They have the ultimate say, however, but we'll push very hard for that.
But the bids aren't until next April on that schedule, right?
Right, but we have to have decisions to IDOT.
By November 15th. All these, because this is part of a federal project, all the plans go down to Springfield for review, and they, they will not budge on that November 15th date, or we'll miss the April letting.
Well, and what happens, so, so it's pre-final plans, and, and, you know, what if, okay, so we, we go with whatever we, the wish list, and then we say, you know what, I don't want to, I want to cut this by a quarter million dollars, because we want that quarter million somewhere else. Not that those dollars necessarily are, that's how you think through it, but how much flexibility is there? Okay, so IDOT's approved it, and then the final plan doesn't include the pavers, for example, that, like, that's an obvious one.
I'm going to have our consultant respond to that.
We have that kind of flexibility.
Can I just expand? Because that's what, when you said bid it as alternates, maybe explain that to me. Is that what, because that's what I'm thinking. If we say we want to spend $3 million, but we realize after we go through the budget process, we want to spend $2 million, am I thinking of it the right way, or is, I think I'm saying the same thing you are?
Right, but those, but those bids are in April. So by April, presumably, we would have an idea.
But we can't do that? We have to be ready by November 15th, and you're saying we have to go in with 100% of what we will do?
Here's the way I would look at it. Any of the optional elements that the Village Board absolutely wants, we would not bid as an alternate. We would build that into our budget and anticipate that and budget for it. If there's items that are on the fence that would, that are more wants rather than needs, we can always include them as alternates. If it's a wonderful bid climate and we get great bids and there's, we're underneath what our budget was for 2020, then perhaps we can add them in without any impact to the budget.
Right, but, but here's, but, but if, according to schedule up on the board, that's April of 2020.
Right.
That's almost a year from now. The time constraint is this November 15th deadline, and between November 15th and April 24th, or between November 15th, I mean, we should, we should have a sense of where we are by November 15th. The problem is the consultants need time to do their work, and the question, I guess I have, is if we submit, you know, this plan on November 15th, because we say tentatively this is what we want to go for, and then we change our mind, how much does that mess up the IDOT federal money process?
Yeah, great, great discussion, and so a couple, couple timeframes.
Because I think that would address, I think that's what you're basically saying. We need, we need, we need to make the final decision on dollars after we've done our work through, for the budget process.
Right, we can't, right.
So, so the part we really haven't spelled in here completely is to go back to the funding source, to request additional funding will be a key step we want to make, and we will want to make that as, as soon as we can, where we know, you know, kind of the ask.
But aren't all the optional ones on our nickel and not grant-funded?
Yeah, that's what I'm confused by, actually.
So we weren't going to share that news today.
Well, not in detail.
But there is an opportunity for us to go back to the ITEP, the funding source, and ask for more money. We didn't want to necessarily plant that seed, because the odds aren't very likely, but we're going to go through that process anyway and see if they'd be willing to increase our, our grant amount. And the timing of that is within the next couple of months.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, you've got a sizable increase you're looking at. That would be probably, likely a lot smaller potential increase, so, you know, you have to consider what it is you're willing to fund. This is a big extra, so part of it to, to come to you guys was, you know, what, what feels like it might, might be worth going after, either from the public or from your standpoint, but, but, but the IDOT schedule is, yeah, pre-final plans November, and then final plans are in January, well ahead of, of the April.
Well, January, January is an easy date for us to hit, because we've done our budget process by then.
Yeah, and we do have some flexibility between pre-final plans and final plans to, you know, to make those adjustments, but essentially, by November, we're looking at, you know, having plans that have incorporated kind of the intent of, of the streetscape.
Well, but I think, look, I think we can maybe come up with, you know, call it 80%, 90%, and then through the budget process, we're not likely to go up. We're likely to go down, if anything, and say, you know what, the, the plan, the pre-plan that you submitted in November, based on our feedback from August, had this element and this element, which are out now. Is that as big a struggle to get your final plan for January, based on sort of our tweak through the budget process? Would that, that sort of address what you're thinking, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, and I would ask, I mean, I guess I'd want to understand, if we look at the, you know, the preliminary streetscape budget that was put in place, which is 1.5 million roughly is what is going to be federally funded, do we expect really any of the 1.8 additional enhancements to be funded by the federal government? And if not, I, I guess I'm still confused then on why any of this 1.8 wouldn't just go through the, our regular budgeting process, and we just go with the base project? Because it's, unless we're not thinking we'd even spend 20%.
Well, I guess the question is, does the whole project, do all of the plans need to be submitted to IDOT, even the stuff that they're not funding or that the federal government's not?
Yeah, that's a great question, and yes, it does, because it's going through a state letting, every, every morsel of construction goes through, through their process.
Oh, so even, even, even the stuff that we're paying for has to go through the state process?
Correct, correct. We have water main on this project, you know, none of it is participating by IDOT, but it will have to be on the plans, just as the streetscape will also. So it's not like we can say, you know, the parts that are not, not participating, we can just throw those in. IDOT will definitely have a review say over all that.
Okay, so now backing up, I just, this is because, this is part of the bidding for the Central Street reconstruction, and that's what's driving the schedule, because we have to include this in even the parts, even apparently the parts that we're going to pay for that are on this.
Yeah, the entire limits are, you know, from, from the railroad to the West End to Sheridan Road, all the way through the residential section, and then on a Womet, from the railroad up to Lake, so the grander project is reconstructing the roadway, new traffic signal, you know, restoration of all that. The streetscape is part of that project, but the funding for this, streetscape came up much later in our picture, so, but it is all, all one construction project.
Your, I mean, your comment about there's an opportunity potentially for additional money, are we talking a couple hundred thousand dollars potentially, or are we talking more or less, or?
You know, I'll probably get in trouble by saying anything, but we're, we're not going to be able to say, hey, ITEP, we can, we can spend three times as much as we could, can you give it to us?
Right, that's not going to happen, I get that.
As soon as you're 10 to 20%, I think that is realistic, and that's, that's what I was alluding to earlier, is once we kind of grapple with how much we're searching for, we can make a request, we don't have to live with what we have today, we can say, you know, prop it up in a way, this is a great project, we got some extra things we'd like to do here, you know.
Well, I guess, I guess, I mean, I guess I would ask the staff that, you know, if we're going to do this decision matrix with your input, that this is available at the next board meeting, you know, the first meeting in June, not the second meeting in June, just so that, you know, we're having time to process it. Now, whether we have to talk about it in the meeting or not, I just think we need to have time to think through this.
I have a, just, I wanted to, if I can add something. Great, I mean, if, if we can get more out of this, that's wonderful, and I think we should go for it, but what if, you know, what if they say no? Can we then edit and say, you know, you know, this is, we're going to have to scale back at this point, because we're not getting additional funds and we're not adding more?
So my advice to the board would be to proceed down the road, anticipating that we're not going to get any additional ITEP funding, and we have to go through this process to prioritizing what we want to see, and if we do get additional funds, that will just make the decision so much easier, but as we stand here today, there's no confidence that we're going to be able to get additional grant money.
So then I guess, the question I would also ask then, President Blinsky, is just then, these additional cost items, why can't we do them later? I guess that would be helpful in this matrix we're getting a little bit to understand, you know, is, you know, these are just going to be, there's going to be significant cost savings by doing them as part of, you know, the project, but if we decide we want to, you know, add the light, I don't know, you know.
Yeah, no, no, right, no, but it seems like there's a number of items that could be done.
I think we're going to need that information from staff, too, to really understand, you know, because if we don't do this, we'll do it in two years, and the cost of living will adjust, but we're not, we're not making a poor decision. I think that would be also really helpful for us.
Trustee Dodd, in our decision matrix, we can highlight those items that could easily be added piecemeal after the fact, versus those that have to be incorporated with the initial construction.
Like you may have to make a decision on the sidewalk, because otherwise, you're going to rip up the sidewalk twice, you know?
Yeah, and if that sidewalk, replacement sidewalk is going to have subsurface electrical and things like that, that'll all, but we would, yes, we'll put together, we'll, we'll try and prioritize what the, the bang-for-the-buck items are and have it in such a way where it's, you can decide how deep you want to go. We know the board is focused very keenly on making sure that we're adding to other infrastructure with the upcoming budget.
Right, and we've added to, we've added to our pension payments this year, we've all, and we've sort of decided to do that.
Where the staff is under no illusion that the board wants this to be some sort of binary choice between the two, that this would have to, we'd have to, once we figure out what the, the appetite is, figure out a funding mechanism for it. But in the meantime, as, as they say, when, for a lot of this, once the, the, once the businesses and everybody on Central is experiencing the disruption, once the sidewalk is pulled up, most of, substantial parts of this are going to have to get done at that point, and if it's, if we don't do it, then we're just not going to be doing it, but at, since we're there.
And probably the more expensive items, I suspect.
Yes.
You know, like the streetlight, you know, adding a string of lights is not as expensive as ripping up the sidewalk or whatever.
That was one of the concerns I heard I wanted to address, too, is if we get, in an environment, we get a bid that's higher than we can sustain, we can pull back some elements from construction, and, and actually, we can pull them back without, without added costs, if they're, if each individual element is less than 10% of the overall construction cost, and that's just through the IDOT letting process, the, the bylaws of that, so to speak. So, you know, if we, if we find we're in over ahead, and we say, we'll have to have a tiered approach that says, all right, the first thing we pull back is, is the, you know, horizontal, or whatever that, you know, but we could have that idea in mind, that plan in mind, so that we can, we can really work toward the budget, and IDOT offers us the flexibility in that, too.
Okay. Any further questions? This is, I know this has run on a little bit longer, but hopefully, hopefully this has provided helpful guidance to the staff and answered some of our questions. It's, it's a tight timeframe, so I would ask the staff to, you know, get us what we can get as quickly as possible. Trustee Kersman?
Just two last pieces I'd like to contribute to the conversation, and I appreciated Trustee Plunkett sort of roping me in a little bit with, you know, getting too granular, but I do have two broader, in that spirit, though, I do have two broad pieces of feedback I'd like to, to add, and one is even, and I appreciate the Veterans Park dilemma, and I thought you stated it very well, Mr. President, but just generally speaking, and again, being broad here, it is, it feels like a void that we don't have something more friendly for children downtown. I really do think that would be a real asset, and we have limited space. I was one of the 35 people at that event, and so I did, did talk to folks, and, you know, I did, I did hear quite a bit on that, so that's, it is what it is, but I just want to put that out there. And the second piece is, all of the above, I do think would create an improvement for our downtown, and that's very exciting, whether we take a minimalist approach or go, go all-in. I look forward to those discussions. You know, I do wonder, though, and this is far afield from the streetscape project here, but, you know, we will have a more modern, better-looking downtown that will, in my opinion, be better, in better condition than the facades of the buildings downtown. And I feel like, when you think big picture of what we're trying to accomplish, where we want to try to just have a spectacular feeling for people to come and, you know, not just spend money, but spend time and the sort of pride, we really need to, I think, as part of this conversation or on a parallel track, really try to address the facades of the buildings downtown, you know, highlighting what makes them historic and really appreciate, appreciate it, but, you know, right now, all this stuff is way nicer than some of the buildings, and so I struggle with that on a really broad, broad, broad basis.
Thank you, yeah, no, that's, that's hopeful, that's hopeful. All right, we're rolling up on nine o'clock, going to suggest we move on, but one last chance? All right, thank you very much. This was very informative and helpful, hopefully both, both directions.
We appreciate it.
Okay, back to the agenda. Next up is, we're still under item four, report of officers, and next up is a report from our village manager, Mr. Frenzer.
No report, Mr. President.
And a report from our corporation counsel, Mr. Stein.
No report, Mr. Mayor.
Item five is a report of the liquor control commissioners, there's no report tonight, so we will move on to our standing committee reports, and I appreciate the patience of the folks that are here for some of the items on the agenda. Trustee Barrow.
Our first item is item 611, and I move to remove item 611 from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of removing the item from the table, please say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed? All right, the item's been removed from the table. Do we need a roll call vote for that, right?
No, that's right. Motion to approve.
Yes.
I move to approve zoning board of appeals report case 2019Z7, 500 Sheridan Road, regarding a request for a 2.43-foot fence height variation to permit the installation of two 6.43-feet tall gates in the front yard in accordance with the plan submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. This item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, so it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. Mr. Adler, would you please approach and summarize the issues in this case for the board? We'll see if the, if our visual here works.
Okay, as was stated, this is a request for a fence height variation to permit the installation of two gates at 500 Sheridan Road. As I always do, sort of mention what would happen if it's granted and what happens if it's denied. This case is one in which the work hasn't been done, so if it's yes, the applicant will have the ability to pull the permit and install the two gates. If it's denied, the gates would have to be made conforming. That'd be a maximum height of four feet, which would match the rest of the proposed fence in the front yard of this property. There's variation standards, the variation standards before you are the variations standards that you see for all variations. There is a second set of standards, and they're for fences. fences in particular, and you don't see these as often, it just so happens tonight, both cases.
Yeah, so do you want to, can you quickly roll through these? I think people are fairly familiar with the, with the.
Sure.
And I'm not, you don't have to read every one, every word, but just quickly roll through what the other considerations are for a variation for a fence.
Sure, 'cause typically, when we're looking at variations for fences, it's usually to do with fence that's taller or a fence that's closed, not open like a picket fence or a typical wrought iron fence. There's the type of street that it's proposed on, is it an arterial collector or residential? Are there other fences in the neighborhood that are similar to the one that's being proposed? The proximity of neighboring dwellings to the, the structures, or structures to the proposed fence, there are occasions where people have asked to put fences in the front yard, but it, it may have a negative impact on where the house next door is located. The size of the zoning lots, are they large, are they small lots, that, that could have an impact on how the fence might impact neighboring properties. Whether the type of fence that's being requested is a replacement or repair of a fence that's existed on the property, the length of time the nonconformity has been on the property, and then final is whether a fence permit was obtained at the time the fence was constructed. Findings of fact, I won't read these, you have these on your second page of your report. This was a split recommendation, I believe it was two for and four against, so you do have both a majority and minority finding. This is the full site plan, and then here is a close-up of the site plan. The gate to the north and the gate to the south are the gates that are exceeding four feet in height. As you can see, they're set back from the front property line. You also could see the four-foot-high fence, which extends off those gates, a majority of it's a couple of feet inside the, the front property line and gonna be landscaped.
Yeah, and that's on page 114 of the PDF, if people want to turn to it.
And then I do have an aerial that shows that the house under construction, does not show, obviously, the detail or the proposed curb cuts and driveways onto the property.
Are those the existing curb cuts?
I'd have to ask the applicant. I think the nor, the south.
The south one isn't?
Yeah, I'm, I think one of them is, but I'm not entirely positive, we might be able to tell off of this. It looks like the north one is pretty close to being in the same location.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Adler? Trustee Kennedy?
I have a question. With regard to those pillars that are to support the gates, are those conforming structures, or what, what sort of regulations do we have?
Depending on the, the width of the lot, we do permit pillars to go above four feet in height, so, I would, I didn't review the pillars just separately, but there's a good chance the pillars might be conforming because this is such a wide, wide property.
Other questions for Mr. Adler?
Another question?
Yes.
Sorry. I also noticed in the testimony that was given before the zoning board, the petitioner made reference to six houses in the area that had six-foot fences existing, and I drove around and didn't find any, so I was just curious, is, and they're not mentioned in his petition.
Right, you could ask the applicant, I, I know that going north, but this would be on, if you're, if you're talking lakefront lots, we know of now, of two, that would be on the east side of, of Michigan Avenue 1, which was granted a variation in 2017, and that was for, I believe, approximately six-foot-high wrought iron fence setback from the, the property and with the, with also the gate setback, and then there's the historic fence that surrounds the property south of that one. There was another fence, I think, across the street from there that was a wrought iron that might have been slightly higher than four feet. Those of you who are on the board in 2017 might recall, when that request came before you, we did refer to the land use committee, the discussion of taller fences for lakefront properties, and we did send out a, a survey to the lakefront property owners to see if they were interested in that, 'cause I think with that particular case, it ultimately was approved, but I think the board was thinking is, you know, are these lots different, maybe we should allow with some sort of setback a taller fence. The one response we got was from somebody who said, well, if you could handle this during the variation case, why don't you handle it on a case-by-case basis, since there didn't seem to be a huge outcry for taller fences on those properties, the land use committee, I, I think just made a recommendation or did not, decided not to send a recommendation.
Deferred not to make a recommendation on higher fences, so, and anybody who was on the land use committee then, I think that was the, decided, we'll talk about each one, as opposed to set a, new set of rules.
And this does differ slightly from the one that was, was granted, in that the majority of the fence is conforming, it's the gates, in this case, it's just the gates that are being requested to exceed that four-foot height limit.
Other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay, don't go far away, so would the applicant please approach? Welcome. So, I've got just a couple of comments to make before I'll turn the floor over to you. Obviously, the members of the board have reviewed the report and they're familiar with the project, this is a pretty straightforward one, so there's not a lot to talk about, but you certainly can describe it. Mr. Adler referenced the zoning board's finding of fact, and I'm just gonna summarize that, you know, specifically, a majority of the zoning board found no conditions of the property that necessitate the two gates to be taller than permitted by the ordinance, and there are no taller front yard fences or gates in the immediate area, so that's what, that's what they said, and so in your comments, please be sure to address those concerns, so that we hear your point of view on that.
Okay. I'm Scott Byron, I'm the landscape architect for the project. I think that you've gone through it, so I don't need to repeat this, but what we tried to do is keep the face to the street at four-foot, well-designed fence, well-landscaped, to help screen the owners of the property, feel and hope that because we set the fence, the gates back, that the two gates at six-foot would be, make them feel more secure and give them a sense of security on the property, and by being a good neighbor, by setting them back and designing them, you know, at least hopefully beautifully. Those were the main issues, and that's their hopes.
Yeah, and, and would you talk about hardship for a minute, 'cause I think that's, this case sort of, this case sort of, as many zoning cases, they sort of hinge on hardship.
Well, I think they feel that, given the, I guess, that someone stated before, that the Bahai Temple is such a, an important visitor's spot, there's a lot of traffic, it's an awkward inter, not awkward, but it's a busy intersection of both pedestrians as well as cars right there, they're hoping that the hardship is in their mind, that people walking by, and the four-foot gate looks very accessible, and you can see the lake on the, on the south gate, although you can, as you look in, you'll be able to see down to the lake, so their concerns are that that's an attractive nuisance, and by putting a six-foot drive gate in that that just helps deter those who might want to be able to come into the property.
And the four-foot gate is gonna be landscaped, right?
The four-foot gate is a pedestrian gate, which is actually not visible unless you walk down the driveway and see it.
I'm sorry, I was talking about the, the four-foot fence along the road.
You don't really see the four-foot, the way we've landscaped is you don't really see the fence, the fence is really covered or softened by the landscape elements, so the idea is, the only thing you really see are the open, two open gates, for obvious reasons.
And the landscaping will be higher than four feet, will be four feet?
The landscaping along the west fence will be higher than four feet.
Right, and that's permitted under the, our ordinances?
And to answer, there was a question about the pillars, we were told that you can have four taller pillars on the property, so we've clustered them at the entrance, the south entrance, and that's why there are no other pillars along the length of the property, that was what the village, we actually have that permitted, the pillars and the four-foot fence are all permitted to date, it was just this question about the gates themselves.
The height of the gate, the height of the gate. Questions for the applicant? Trustee Sullivan?
One of the gates is six feet all the way across, and the other one is the bell-shaped curve?
That's correct.
So it's just six feet at the top.
Technically, that curve, it's the way the village determined it, but the gate measure is six feet to the top of the curve, but because there's a gap between the driveway and the bottom of the fence, that curve becomes 2.43, but actually, it's six feet, from the bottom of the fence to the top of the curve is six feet.
How come both don't match?
Four, it's actually just decorative, we wanted to be, make the, the south entrance more of the main entrance for guests, the other one's supposed to be the service entrance, therefore, a little bit quieter in its design.
Other questions for the applicant? Trustee Dodd?
The one on the, the service entrance, is there a reason why that one is not set back as, as much as the one on the north, on the south side? So it looks like on the plan, one of the fences is set back more into the yard than the other, if I understand that, and I'm just wondering.
I think we just set the, the, the north fence back far enough that any service vehicle could come in and not be overhanging the sidewalk. The, the south gate is set back to create a more elegant, longer entrance visually for the, for the house.
Questions? Alright, hang tight, let me first see if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak on this matter. May I see a show of hands? Okay, so there's no public comment on this. What we've been doing now to, you can, you can have a seat now, we may, we may be talking here for minutes, I don't want you to stand up. What we've been doing to sort of facilitate our discussion, this was, for the new trustees, this actually is very new, even for the older trustees, we've only done this for a few meetings. I'm, I'm gonna ask trustees which way they're leaning in the case, that will allow for us to sort of focus our discussion, keep it moving along, and it's optional to put your view, your viewpoint forth in this process, but I will tell you that generally, what I'm looking for is the, the minority report, if you will, so if you don't answer, and you're the only person who doesn't answer, I'm gonna call on you first to say, okay, what are you debating, what are you, what are you thinking? So, if you're leaning in favor of granting the applicant's request, please raise your hand. Okay, and if you're leaning against, please raise your hand. You're not sure? Well, okay, so, trustee Dodd, what are you thinking about?
I was just interested in hearing other people's perspective, I mean.
And I'm happy to speak, but anybody who wants to speak first? I mean, I, I think the decision is sort of, it, I mean, you can make a very compelling argument for two different answers. Compelling argument number one is, look, the rules are, it's a four-foot fence, it's a four-foot fence, and I don't see any difference between this property and any other property. Four-foot fence, four-foot fence. The other, the other argument is that you do see hardship because of the location, that lakefront properties and a property close to the Bahai Temple, such as this one, which will be prominent and have views of the lake and all the rest of that stuff. There is hardship with respect to that, and that what you're granting isn't very big, there's no negative impact on a neighbor, you know, this is big, nobody's staring at this, and so there isn't an impact on the public or on a neighbor, and so you can, you can see the hardship and balance it and say, that's the way to go. And I think those, this is a pretty simple case, it's either you see the hardship or you don't see the hardship. If you don't see the hardship, you don't agree, if you see the hardship, then you can support. So, would anybody like to add?
I guess the only reason I was asking is I did ask our police chief, I just asked if there was any, if we know that there's been more trespassing on properties along the lake, or residents have complained about that, or residents have had more break-ins or whatever along Michigan or Sheridan, and the answer was no, so that's why I was kind of asking, but I think that it is very, you know.
Well, what's, what's interesting, with my recollection, when, when the fence case, the last fence case on Michigan Avenue got approved, wasn't there a police report, like, within a week of somebody trespassing there? Does that, does that ring a bell, Mr. Frenzer?
On that particular owner's property?
Yeah, it was either that property or, or the one, neighboring one, that there was somebody, you know, that there was a police call, somebody trespassed and walked through their yard, which is, which by the way, is crazy to me, that someone would walk through someone's yard just because they felt like they could, but apparently, it does happen on occasion, and I, I'm not saying it's a high crime statistic.
I think that one had to do with the, maybe celebrity isn't quite the right word, but the notoriety of the owner.
Okay. Was that, was it related to that? Okay, 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 okay. That particular owner, which is not this particular owner.
It was actually the previous owner's property, that's what the cause was of concern, that there was a trespass on the property previously owned by that person, and someone dropped, dropped something off at the gate, or went up to the door and dropped off a gift or something, and that was the concern for having the higher security, from what I can recall from my prosecution of the case.
Trustee Plunkett?
I mean, the notoriety of the owner aside, I mean, this board, or most of this board did approve the other fence on Michigan Avenue, and that was an entire fence, and this is just two gates, so it is, you know, kind of hard to go back on, you know, that decision, it was the same, the idea that it was set back, I mean, we're talking about two gates. The other thing is, I think, considering the scale of the house and the scale of the lot, the size of this fence looks, I mean, the size of this gate looks appropriate to the scale, and it's still, you know, completely open, you know, the, got the openness, there's nothing closed off about it, it's an arterial street, we have made a lot of exceptions in other areas of the village, I just think this is too much like that case that we approved on Michigan Avenue not that long ago.
Right, which was, which was location-based, though, this was not about notoriety, this was about being really close to the water plant and, you know, like, close to the beach.
Right, lake and everything.
Near the sailing beach, near lots of stuff, and there was a genuine concern about, about that, I think. This one, you could make an argument, maybe less so because of that, but as the, the landscape partners have pointed out, if you can see the water from Michigan Avenue, that, or from Sheridan Road, that, that could be an enticement, you know, to saying, oh, well, heck, I can get, I, I, you know, nobody will mind, neighbors, they won't mind if I just cut through there, which, again, is crazy to me that people would actually do that, but.
I must say, I do think there's, I think, a neighboring home that has been confused for part of the Bahai Temple.
The one that has the private property sign on it?
Correct, I do, I think there has been some confusion with Bahai guests, thinking that it's all part of a complex.
I think this is a, this is a unique property in a unique location, across the street from the Bahai Temple, on a major street, slightly larger fence, set back from the street, this seems to me, I think, to be an easy decision, I would favor it.
Trustee Plunkett and trustee Barrow said it well, and I'm agreeing, and, actually, the fence is all conforming at four feet, it's the two gates, and 90% open, and, and setback, one's 37 feet back, the other one, I wish the other one on the north end, or what, the service gate is on the, was more, was further setback than 17 feet, but I don't think anybody's gonna notice these. Trustee Kennedy, trustee Kersman?
My, my opposition wasn't necessarily strongly held, it, it just seemed to me that, that there are houses on both sides of that house, who, unless they've experienced problems, and I don't think they have, that I wonder whether the security concerns are real, or just sort of projections of, of, you know, incoherent fears, and, and I'm not sure that making exceptions to our policy based on just suppositions and unfounded fears at this point is a good reason to do it, so it's, it's not that I, I find the plan offensive in any way, or, you know, difficult, or creating a problem for the neighborhood, it just, I just wonder about the strength of the argument that's made in favor of it, and, and personally, I would like to give deference to the zoning board of appeals, who has a lot of experience in this, unless I have a pretty strong feeling that they've made a decision.
Well, this, this is one where sometimes... Well, this, this is one where sometimes, sometimes the village board has more latitude than the zoning board. The zoning board is tasked with a strict interpretation of the zoning code. And so a lot of times, you know, it's like, no, you know, they're sort of tasked with that. And if they say yes, well then, okay, then it sort of sails through us. If they say no, then, then we have our say too, so.
Well, actually, I think that, and I, I appreciate, as a former member of the zoning board, got a, had a good discussion on it and got it right. One, they honed in on the hardship, which hardship, and I totally agree, I'm not supporting it because I don't think security is a good reason to do it. I think, you know, looking at, and one of the zoning board members said, there's others things that would go beyond it, you know, should we look at, and does this really add to the character of the neighborhood? And I think it does. I think there's more that they can do that and say, can we live with it there? Knowing that the hardship might be a stretch, so. And for that, I can...
Any further discussion?
I just, I wanted to...
Trustee Plunkett?
No, no, I, I think we should just focus on, too, that this is not the fence spanning the entire property. You know, the, the fence is four feet. These are two gates and the pillars are approved, and a four-foot-high pillar with a, I mean, a four-foot-high gate with a six-foot-high pillar might even look out of proportion. I just wanted to add that.
Okay. You've heard our discussion. Is there anything you'd like to add? Okay. So this item, again, comes with, to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It needs five votes to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board, and affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the zoning board of appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Kennedy?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Barrow?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. Motion carries. The zoning board of appeals recommendation has been overturned. So just from a process point of view, as I think you're probably aware, this, because it became with a negative recommendation, the ordinance will actually be on next meeting's agenda, and that's when it will be approved. It will be on the consent agenda, though. So, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We are back to trustee Barrow.
Your next item is item 6.12. I move to remove item 6.12 from the table.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Are there any opposed? All right, so 6.12 has been removed from the table.
Thank you. I move to approve zoning board of appeals report, case 2019Z13, 1913 Thornwood Avenue, regarding a request for a 2.0-foot fence height variation and fence openness variation to permit the installation of a 6.0-foot tall, solid fence in the side yard adjoining a street in accordance with the plans submitted.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. It's been moved to the second. Again, this item also comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It will also need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. Mr. Adler, would you approach and give us the lowdown on this one?
Okay, two fence requests in one night. This is, besides the height variation, this is also variation to allow a closed fence. The, the gates that you just reviewed were open, so they didn't require that variation. This also is in the side yard adjoining a street. It's, it's not a front yard. Like the previous request, this is a fence that hasn't been installed, so that's good news. So if approved, they would be able to pull the permit and install the fences requested. If not, they would have to reduce the height of the fence and increase the openness of the fence to meet the requirement, and that'd be four-foot high, 50% open, or set the fence in to be out of the side yard adjoining a street. The variation standards are the same. You've got the normal variation standards plus the additional fence variation standards. Finding or fact, again, this was a split vote. There was one who voted for it and five members who voted against it, and this is again on page two of your report. The site plan in this case, what you see in red is a conforming fence. What you see in blue is the proposed fence. As you see from the, the notation from the applicant, the fence, the, the property actually jogs, and the northern portion of the fence there is approximately eight, nine feet away from the sidewalk, and it gets a little bit closer to the south.
And that's, I think that's page 139 of the PDF, if you wanna look at the site plan.
And then there's Ariel, if you're interested in that. I'll leave it up on the site plan.
Questions for Mr. Adler? So the difference between these two, in addition to the height, is this is a, this is a closed fence?
Correct.
Any, no questions for Mr. Adler? Okay. Don't go anywhere yet, John. The applicant, please come forward.
Welcome. I won't read all of the things I just read, because presumably you were paying attention there, but I will sort of reiterate and summarize what the zoning board said, and that was, a majority of the zoning board found that there are no conditions of the lot that are creating a hardship. It's not uncommon to have a corner lot and a backyard along a street, even on Ridge Road. There are no other tall and enclosed fences in the area, so the proposed fence would alter the character of the neighborhood. So that's what the zoning board said. If you would be sure to address those concerns, that would be great.
Yeah, so just to go right into those concerns, I think the first thing is, I think our view on the hardship side of things is, it is a pretty busy road along Ridge Road. One of the concerns of the zoning board was that there's no other fences similar to this along Ridge Road in the immediate vicinity, which is true, but when you drive along Ridge, you'll notice there's really not many houses that have an exposed backyard to Ridge Road. The vast majority of houses are facing Ridge, so there's not really many that have an exposed backyard like, like ours does. The one right behind our house does, but most of the other ones, it's, the house is rotated, so it's facing. And I think that's a significant reason why there's not many fences. Certainly, as you drive further north, when you get into Winnetka, there's more fences there. But if you do go a few blocks further away on Hunter, just north of Lake, there's a number, I think most of the houses on the west side of Hunter, just north of Lake, have six-foot fences in their, what's their front yard? Although I think they have streets on both sides of their yards, which is the reason for that. And certainly, in a number of other areas throughout the village, primarily along Wilmette Avenue and turning into Glenview Avenue there, there's a number of fences that have received variations. I'm assuming for, because of the, the busy roads.
Well, that actually raises a question. Mr. Adler, would you come back up here? Something I meant to ask you that I forgot. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but...
No, no problem.
So there, the zoning ordinance does permit enclosed fences, closed fences without the, the 50% openness, in backyards and in, in cer, on certain streets, like certain designated streets are actually listed in the zoning code, that you're, it's a permitted fence. Is that correct?
Correct.
Or could you elaborate a little bit?
Yeah, and I, I, I could go grab the list, but there's a, there's fence exception areas where we permit, typically in the rear yard of double-frontage lots, the fence is up to six and a half feet enclosed. Skokie Boulevard, Old Glenview Road, off the top of my head, I don't recall Hunter. I was gonna look up.
Yep, if you need to grab that, you can grab that. I think that's relevant to the conversation, in that the zoning code does address this issue.
Over the years, we've expanded it when we found areas where it, it made sense, given that we had already established a number of areas where fences could be in rear yards of double-frontage lots. Yeah, the 500 block of Hunter, the 900 to 1,000 blocks of Hunter, so that's north of Wilmette Avenue, Lake to Iroquois, on the west side only, those are areas in which you'd be permitted to close fence in the rear yard of those properties.
And that's because it's a double-frontage lot. They've got streets on both, both sides of the property.
Correct. For the most part, it's, it's double-frontage lots. I think there are some, I'm thinking, adjoining Briar, near the highway where we permitted them in side yards adjoining a street, but mostly it's in the rear yard of, of double-frontage lots. There's Virginia Lane, where there are double-frontage lots, adjoining Hibbert Road, that's another area that they've been permitted.
And Lake, Lake, Lake side yards, side yards on Lake?
Yep, Lake Avenue.
Right. Okay, so the zoning, the zoning ordinance, which was just rewritten a few years ago, has specific locations that have already been sort of pre-identified as permitted, but Ridge is not on that list?
That is correct.
Okay, okay. That's what, sorry, I, I meant to ask that before, so I apologize for interrupting you. So it's relevant to the, to the discussion here.
Yeah, and I, I, I guess I'd speculate a little bit on that list of, again, going back to the fact that there's not many lot configurations like this along Ridge Road, where there is that exposed backyard onto Ridge, which is certainly a difference than, than some of those other areas that were, I think, pre-approved.
So if you're gonna landscape it anyways, why isn't, why isn't just a four-foot wrought iron fence?
Well, so, yeah, there's already landscaping there.
Yeah, I mean...
So part of it is just because of the busyness of Ridge Road, and I think it's providing some buffer to Ridge Road when we're in the backyard. So that's, that's really kind of the, kind of the openness request?
Mm-hmm.
Or the waiver for the openness request, is that buffer to Ridge Road, where, and again, we're not looking to have it go all the way up to the front yard. We're trying to keep it just in the backyard, but it's really that buffer from the busyness on Ridge Road.
Okay. Questions for the applicant?
I live in Kenneworth Gardens, so I'm real familiar with your property. I've gone by it for decades. And I noticed that there was thick, tall landscaping there already. And as I gather, you're planning on placing this fence, the landscaping will be between the sidewalk and the fence?
Correct.
And I, maybe to follow up on President Blinsky's question, but why the need for, for the fence at all, given the, the density and the height of the landscaping that you have currently? Or why, why the need to have both tall and solid, given what you have there currently?
Yeah, our, our thinking on that was, again, a buffer from Ridge Road, just providing an additional buffer in addition to the, to the bushes that are already there. So it just annoys the traffic going back and forth pretty regularly on the busy street that, that Ridge is. So that, that was really our thinking on that, is that it would provide an additional buffer to, to the bushes that are already there.
Thank you. Other questions? Trustee Plunkett, you used to live on Ridge Road, so...
Sorry, I pretty much had your lot.
It was Chestnut, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any questions, further questions? Okay, so let me take this time to see if there's any one in the audience who would like to speak on this matter. Okay, hearing none? Yeah, you can come up, sure. Come on up.
We have a large dog, so part of the privacy...
Actually, I think you forgot to say your name as well. Just identify, both of you, just identify yourself for a minute.
Deborah and Jeremy.
Jeremy, okay, okay, thank you.
So, part of it is to keep the dog enclosed, so we absolutely do need to get a fence. Whether this is approved or not, we're getting a fence. And then children, and then, you know, as you can see, it's our backyard there. We have a patio back there with a fire pit, and so part of the privacy, even though there's the, the shrubbery there, that road is so busily traveled when you're sitting in the back, like, all the lights from cars that come through, they're really glaring on your eyes. And I have really high light sensitive eyes. And what you can't see on this eye, well, the way that road kind of curves, it's always like when you're sitting facing our backyard, even with the shrubs, those lights are like shining in your eyes and turning the, what's that road?
From traffic, from traffic.
From the traffic.
Greenwood from Kenneworth.
As those cars, and so...
But doesn't that one hit your neighbor's house first?
So it kinda goes from the neighbor's house through our yard as they're turning.
And actually, you know, and the funny thing, because those shrubs are so high, like, all of our neighbors, they're all like, really? You guys have to apply for a variance? They're all very supportive of it, 'cause they're just like, it's gonna be hidden and, you know. So I guess that's all I have to add as to why offense.
Thank you. All right, any further questions here? Okay, so have a seat for a moment. Again, I'm gonna, I, I work this, the, our stroll pro, I'm sorry, straw poll process, and ask people how they're leaning on this case to sort of drive our discussion. So if you're leaning in favor of granting the request, would you raise your hand? Okay, and if you're leaning against granting the request, raise your hand? Okay. Does anybody, I mean, it sounds like the, the discussion can be rather abbreviated, but anybody wanna offer their point of view?
I mean, I guess from a former Ridge Road resident, I just think it is a busier road, but it, it has a beautiful character of kind of a boulevard, and I think especially as soon as you start going north of Mallinckrodt, it has that feel all the way up to Winnetka. And I just think that a closed fence, even if it was on a side yard, would, you know, take away from that residential boulevard feel. And there's no other fences like that on Ridge, and I just, would be really hard to make an exception in this case.
While this property, while this property is, is well landscaped, the next fence request that we get might be a property without landscaping whatsoever. So I think this is a precedent that we really don't wanna set, and it really, it's, it's really inconsistent with the neighboring street for a long distance either way.
Trustee Dodd?
Actually, you bring up a really good point, trustee Barrow, and I, do we have any zoning requirements around landscaping, so they could remove the landscaping once we granted this anyways? I'm just curious more than anything.
Unless it was placed as a condition, we don't have a requirement.
Okay. So your point is very well taken. Trustee Barrow?
Any other comments?
I totally understand what they're asking for.
Those are, yeah, and I thought trustee Plunkett and trustee Barrow hit the two, you know, I mean, Ridge is a really nice road. It, I realize there's traffic, but it doesn't feel, it doesn't feel like Skokie Boulevard. It doesn't feel like Lake Avenue. It, it feels like a neighborhood road, and it would be an eyesore. I mean...
And didn't, not this board, but didn't a prior board some years ago require a tall, solid fence on Lake Street to be removed?
I don't know about on Lake.
A little bit south of the Jiffy Lube area, I'm thinking?
Green Bay.
Green, Green Bay. I'm sorry. Thank you, John.
Green Bay.
On Green Bay Road, exactly.
Yeah.
I recall there was a variation request, it might have been at Forest, that was denied. I don't think it was installed, but they, it was requested. It's, I, I think right now it's a picket fence. They might have landscaping, but it was, was not supported. And yeah, that was, I, I forget the year, but it's probably over 10 years ago, but...
On Lake Street?
I know, sorry, Green Bay.
Green Bay, I'm sorry, sorry again. On Green Bay Road.
Which is a busy, which is a busy road. And look, our, our fence ordinances are for aesthetics. Our fence ordinances aren't about public safety. They're about, are, do we wanna live in a community where everybody has a high enclosed fence and you can't see anybody's yards? And so, okay. Any further discussion here? We will offer the applicant,
if you'd like to add anything at this point? If you wanna approach.
I, I mean, we have no intention of taking the landscaping out. I would not care if there were, I mean, that's just not gonna happen. But even a four-foot... there were, I mean, that's just not going to happen, but even a four-foot privacy fence, which would be completely hidden by the landscaping that's there to block that light issue for us, because, and even though you might have lived on Chestnut, a lot of those houses on the corners have two-side lots when they're on Ridge, and typically, their porches are on the area that is not up against the road. We do not have that option in our yard, and there is only one other lot like our yard, along Ridge, and it's our neighbor behind us.
I'll ask, of the, are there any trustees that if it was just a four-foot solid fence that would support it? Okay, so, and I, I also, if it's solid, solid is the issue for me, not as much the height.
And I, I would just make the observation, that this case does differ from the Sheridan Road case that we just heard, because this, this is a fence that's in a neighborhood. There are houses right across the street, and it does affect the neighborhood, whereas the Sheridan Road fence was on a much busier street and across from a large, you know, tourist structure.
Right, and I wouldn't have supported it if it were a solid fence.
Correct. That was 90% open.
Yeah, this was a wrought iron open fence, yeah. So, okay. This site, again, this item comes with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, it will need five votes to overturn the recommendation of the zoning board. An affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the zoning board appeals recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Sullivan?
No.
Trustee Kennedy?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Barrow?
No.
Trustee Plunkett?
No.
President Blinsky?
No. Motion fails, the zoning board of, of appeals recommendation stands. All right. Trustee Barrow, we're back to you.
Well, thank you. Our next item is item 6.13, and by a letter dated May 21st, the applicant has requested that item 6.13 be heard at the next board meeting. Accordingly, I move to table item 6.13 to the June 11 meeting of the village board.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, now do I need a roll call on this one, or can I do a voiceover? Okay, so all in favor of tabling item 6.13 to the next board meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? All right, so motion carries, item 6.13 is tabled to the next board meeting. And I believe that's it for land use. It's a, it's quite a, frankly, quite a first meeting there, trustee Barrow.
Thank you, and then there were no other items. All the other items were on the consent agenda.
Okay. So we'll move on to the finance committee, trustee Kennedy.
There's no reports this time.
Administration committee, trustee Dodd.
All items were on consent.
Municipal services committee, trustee Sullivan.
No report this evening.
Public safety committee, trustee Kersman?
All items were on consent.
Judiciary committee, trustee Plunkett?
No report.
There are no reports from our special committees, that's item 6.7. Item seven is new business, no additional new business to discuss. Item eight is adjournment, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? We stand adjourned at 9:45.